We'll call the meeting to order.
Ready to roll.
You don't have a paper coffee? Okay, before we do, I wish Alfred was here too. Everybody take their cell phone.
Yeah.
And there's a little button on the side. If you haven't, click it till it turns orange and you're good to go. You can also put your phone in vibrator so you'll still get your calls.
Until it turns orange? We don't want the orange.
You want the orange. By the way, I mean.
Right? This here, you want it orange?
If it's not, if you've got it on black, it's gonna ring. If it's on orange, you want it.
Let me just double check.
Okay, so this little button?
You gotta kinda grab it with your fingernail.
Yeah.
You should see a little orange there.
Do you see it?
No, the orange is in where the button is.
Right here, just on this side here. I'm just gonna, I won't ask on the closer to it.
No, 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 that's fine.
Right there.
Just, yeah.
Can you find it? Yes, you're, you're seeing.
Oh, yeah, it's on here. You don't get your emails and everything, they're just not gonna be dinging.
Right. John, you got yours all done up there?
Oh, of course.
All tallyed up?
Yeah.
Okay. Everybody got, copy the agenda either on their tablet or phone or paper? Take a look at it. I'd like a motion to approve the agenda circulated unless you see something that needs to be changed.
I'll make the motion that we accept the agendas presented.
Moved by Deputy Ward Mackazy. Do we have a seconder?
Don't second that.
Thank you. So we have a seconder. Catherine Gillis. All in favor, I?
I.
Opposed, motion carried. Councillor Poirier has called in. He's running a few minutes late, so he will be joining us. So we'll go ahead here. So we'll go through the staff reports here first. That's a big part of our COW meeting. And everybody should have received copies of those reports, I believe.
We did.
If you had a chance to go through them. If the staff person's here, we'll let them say a couple of words. And if you have any questions, we'll go round table. But if you don't, that's fine too. I think most of the reports are self-explanatory. But if you have a question, you're more than fair to ask. So... The first one is water and wastewater operations.
Chesley's unable to attend. He's in the field today. He's mostly been concentrating over the last month on continuous improvement and repair of municipal water, sewer, and treatment facilities. And on top of that, repairs to live stations. So he's got a fairly detailed report there. So I can handle any questions that may arise from that.
Can I have one question? I would just like to ask if I could have an update for the MRS Development Association on where the water and so this, you know, for the new water treatment plant.
Sure. We can have. We can have a full update to council, actually, for that first meeting in January.
Okay, perfect. I'll let them know that, but I'll get back to them in January. Thank you.
But in terms of, if you wanna call them back right now, we're wrapping up the system assessment and pre-design. So it's coming to close fairly soon.
Okay.
And that will be utilized for the basis of the new treatments facility. So it's moving on.
Moving on. Perfect.
Does that include the infrastructure on Central Avenue too?
It does, it doesn't. It certainly, in terms of the pre-design and system assessment, system assessment component, all the various linear infrastructure that leads into the treatment plant had to be looked at. But on top of that, there'll be a detailed engineering design developed for the Central Pad project. Because it's such a substantial initiative.
Okay. Any other questions for our CAO on that? No questions? Okay, moving on. Is Ellen here?
Ellen's unavailable as well. But her information is in the package there. Her team has been, have been to deal with a few at large scale and smaller scale leaks, finishing up their servicing. One thing the team has been able to do is get all the crosscuts put in place before the winter months. A crosscut is basically when Miss Valley has to cut into the asphalt on a road to access the linear infrastructure underneath to make repairs. And then Miss Pass go back and repair that cut to smooth out the area, make sure it's in compliance with the transportation infrastructure renewal. So we have to ask for permitting on every one of those projects. And then it's responsibility of Miss Valley to repair those. So outside of the, all of them have been complete today. Except two that were just occurred over the last few days that were new.
Okay. Any questions with regards to infrastructure?
I just had a question for Ellen on the, there's a couple of hydro-singetic that we had talked about last time. I see in her report there she has, it's in progress still. But it's important to update and make sure that they're completed before winter sets in.
Yes, so councillor, I'll get an update for you hopefully later, by at least the end of the day tomorrow. I'm on that schedule.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions around the table? Okay, we'll move on to Erin Gillis. Is Erin here?
Production.
That's Erin. Do you wanna say if Erin's there?
Any questions?
Oh, yeah, your request there.
I have a question.
Sure.
I noticed in your report, you had that there was two loads of contaminated materials brought to the Strathorne facility. Could you explain like what happened? Or what contaminated those materials to cause that?
Yeah, so there was a hydraulic leak in the GFL trucks. When you have a curbside collection vehicle, they're separated in half. So there was a hydraulic leak on the garbage side. But there's a little, it's not a full, it's not welded.
Right.
So there is some seepage that came through. Once we get oil of any kind on our blue bags, we can't run it on our recycling line because it will contaminate everything. And then our product's not saleable.
Right.
So when we do have contaminated loads, we have to go through Nova Scotia Environment to get approval to landfill. So right now, it's kinda hanging out in a roll-off bin in a Kenlock, waiting for approval.
Okay. I was just worried it was something that, you know, came in that was contaminated.
No, but we get that a lot.
I'm sure you do.
We do get that a lot. But this time, this was a truck issue.
And I'm quite concerned about the amount of garbage that people are putting in their recyclables.
Yeah.
And I guess there is a plan coming into place for education and...
Correct. Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions for Erin?
Not a question, but just to let you know that gentleman that's had Mrs. Garbage who used to roll there, he did get it picked up.
Yeah, good. And just, there is a note on the report, and we'll bring it up later on. There's two requests from GFL to change their collection schedule. The first one is on the South Run. So when we do have GFL requests to change the collection schedules, we send out written letters to the homeowners. So that'll go out in advance. It impacts the South Run mostly, Port Hastings, on the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday run. So it's high level in the report, but a note to the impacted residents will go out in the mail. And then we'll put it on social media. And the second one is about garbage collection boxes. But we'll get into that later.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, we'll move on. Thank you, Erin. Trudy, is Trudy here? There she is. All these masks.
Yeah, it's her to know who's here.
Any questions for Trudy? She'd be in environmental compliance.
I didn't have anything for you.
I just have a comment though. We have ongoing inspections by Environment of Nova Scotia. And last round, Trudy worked diligently to make sure we were prepared for those inspections. And this time, I don't think we had any directives so far out of those visits. But in terms of, in the past, we certainly had, just even last year, I think we had over 100 related to...
Wow. Excellent.
So we've made significant progress. I just wanted to recognize Trudy's efforts on that front.
Excellent.
Thank you, Trudy.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations on the good work. Because we heard a whole lot in the last few years about the issue of compliance. And it's nice to hear that we're finally getting through that and onto a nice clean record. So thank you. Tanya Finance.
Any questions about very far?
I didn't have any. I see.
No, I went for two.
Anybody else?
That was easy. No, I didn't have any.
Well, I could six or seven here.
Oh, do you?
No. Okay, I guess there's no questions.
Thank you, Tanya.
Donna, Department of Tourism and Culture. First of all, if you have any comments to make and then questions?
I have two items. This paper will be coming out in the next two weeks. And our Winter Events brochure will be inserted in it. So I just want to let you know that is coming. And our Sounds of the Season campaign on Facebook has taken off. We're getting a lot of traction on it.
Good.
Oh, good.
It's twofold, to support our local musicians, but also to tug at some heartstrings for those that can't be home.
Excellent.
So that's working out really well. So we're really proud of that. Hope you get a chance to check it out.
Are the numbers down for, I would assume they probably are, for winter events and stuff like that? Like I know our snowmobile rallies and stuff, they're all in question right now how we can do them. Although some of them are outside, the ones with dinners and dances and stuff.
Yeah, there hasn't been a lot. We have a program with called Winter Active. And it's funding for communities to put on activities. So we have, those applications are down this year for sure. But they're still planning the best, preparing for the worst kind of thing.
Just for councils, understand what's available for funding there.
The Winter Active program? Charlotte, you'll speak to them in her report.
Okay.
She is terrified.
Okay. Any other questions for Donna? Thank you, Donna.
She answered it.
Okay. Charlotte, you're next.
I'd like to start by answering the question.
Okay.
So our Winter Active applications are down this year compared to last year. What we've done with that funding is with small court funds, up to $500 typically. This year, we increased it to $600 per event, just noting that there's additional charges for socialized viewing and safety and fire and that sort of thing, the protocols, just to support them to adhere to those protocols. So $600, not a little for those.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for Charlotte? No other questions? Yeah, everybody's getting off easy today.
I think so.
Yeah, it's Christmas time.
It's just what they, they've done their reports well.
Yeah.
That's the difference, right? When your reports are done.
Yeah. And Melanie?
Does anybody have any questions?
I didn't have anything for you.
I just have, I have one. I know we've talked and our CAO is being looked at. Are you working on an application for the federal money for internet or cell services? Is that in the works? And just wondering how that's going.
Sure. So municipal staff are working with a consultant to put together an application for the Universal Broadband Fund, which is open to both broadband and mobile projects in partnership with Indigenous communities. And so that work is underway. There's two streams of funding. There's a rapid response stream, which has a January deadline. That's not the stream that we're targeting at this point because of the fact that it's rapid response. The projects have to be completed by November. So we're targeting the other stream, which closes February 15th. So yes, we are working on an application for that funding.
And why not begin? I'm just trying to understand why we're not applying for the January one as well.
Because it's the expedited timeline of, you can only put one application in.
Oh, so you can't do January and February?
No.
Okay, that makes sense. This is the same type of funding pretty well?
It is the exact same funding, only the deadline for actually getting the work done is extended in the, with the February funding.
Okay. Any other questions? Questions for...
I just want a question for... Melanie, I'm just wondering about that. I know it says it's awaiting report on the two technical investigation of Port Island. Are you able to give me a quick...
I couldn't give you much of an update at this time. So that piece of work, it took a little bit of time to get the contractor over there because they didn't have to go over by garage. They did go over and they successfully drilled. No problems arose in the field. The report isn't expected till mid-January. I know that when they did, the barge was kinda stuck at Port Island for a few days before they could get it back. But I'm sorry to that. I don't have anything to report yet. There's a lot of samples that have been taken and they have to go and be analyzed. And then we'll have an idea of the subsoil conditions and whether or not what is to be designed is useful to be built in that location.
Yes. Okay. All right, thank you, Melanie.
Thank you, Melanie. And, okay. Go ahead, Donna.
Okay. The sidewalks in the beside program in Wyckogma, how's that coming along? Is there, because I was asked about from where Dexter left off on the area property to the bridge, the sidewalk there. What's, where's that at right now? I know you're still working on it and that, but...
We are, yes. So there's two pieces of that. One is, we have an upcoming January meeting with Weygama First Nation to discuss partnering on the design. Because the bridge itself that goes over, we can't do anything with the bridge. The sidewalk isn't safe. So we're looking at the possibility of some form of walking bridge over the Sky River. So we're still in the design and we're speaking with Weygama about that in January. We hope to have design completed this spring and that to be tendered out. Keeping in mind that, as per policy, the municipality will pay one-third of the capital cost of sidewalk construction, so long as two-thirds of the cost has been attracted elsewhere. So actively, currently, we have an application into the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program Climate Innovation Stream for active transportation implementation across the municipality. And we're waiting to hear back from that. If we successfully attract that funding, that would help offset that cost. But we will put a full presentation in front of council for consideration during that deliberation with regards to that.
Okay. And the other one is, I know from the area property to, you know, where that's at, the bridge. What about from the Sky River Bridge to Rod Swan stop? That's not, is that part of ours too? Or is it more federal?
Nope, it is part of this project.
Okay.
We have to have a lay agreement signed as part of that work with Weygama. And that's part of our meeting. There is considerations that it may extend within that community, but that would be taken care of by Weygama First Nation.
Thank you very much.
Could I just ask one more quick question?
Sure.
Melanie, just going to the community projects. I'm just wondering what's continuing for the model beautification. I just want to bet on.
So the model beautification project, they have $4,000 to use over the last couple of years. They did purchase new banners for the community. They are currently, they've designed a new sign for Mountain Carbon Road that would replace the existing sign at the end of the road and advertise businesses and community groups that are down there. So currently that, we are waiting, we've received three construction estimates. So we just kinda have to move forward with the fabrication on that sign. There is some funding awaiting and the community group is collecting, or some funding remaining that the community group is collecting some quotes on that. Did purchase new rope for the posted rope fence around the playground in Model. That has to be put in. But it will likely wait until spring because that manila rope swells with weather. And just to, with that weather, just to get another shoulder to it. So that's pretty much what's remaining in that funding cost. There's not a loss. They did do some work in previous years with regards to flowers and banners in the community. It's part of that funding cost.
Okay, great, thank you, Melanie.
Okay. Welcome, Councillor Poirier, to the meeting. And you have a question?
Yes. Sidewalk and wastewater, it's one-third, one-third, one-third. And the residence space, one-half, one-third, right?
Yeah.
Does the sidewalk follow the wastewater? You know, or does the sidewalk goes further?
Are you talking about sidewalk in Wyckogma?
Yeah. Well, not only in Wyckogma. But the reason I'm asking this is for wastewater and everything, there are many, you know, as I just formulated there. But if, example, if we're gonna put a sidewalk in, we had, the Shenkapi people had to put $300,000 from their own pocket and pay it.
That's right.
So that's why I wanna know when we're gonna put a sidewalk in. You know, if it follows the wastewater, whether it's a combination, the expense would be combined altogether. And then it would be one-third, one-third, and one-third, and a half, and one-third. Or is there a change of formula, you know?
Okay, I understand your question.
Do you understand what I'm saying? I just wanna make sure that everybody's reading it firmly, you know? But I know, you know, that's for Wyckogma, it's still a big deal. But you know, for future.
So as per municipal policy, for the construction of sidewalks, the municipal council can contribute up to a third of the funding, so long as two-thirds of the funding are attracted from elsewhere. And of that one-third of the funding, a half of that third is recoverable from eligible break hairs. The Wyckogma-Wegoma project is a little bit different because Wegoma could be a potential partner in that. So it may not be exactly 50%. If that 50% that would be recoverable of the one-third could potentially be split between Indigenous Services Canada and residents of Wyckogma, depending on your meetings with Wegoma.
Thank you. No, it's not, it's not Wyckogma particularly, you know? It's just about, you know, the general, you know? Thank you.
As per policy.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? We are good to move on. Okay. I know, I believe it was April mentioned the request for Green for Life. Erin, sorry.
Yeah, Erin.
Do you want to speak to these two items?
Yeah, so the first one is the change in schedule on the Friday. Then for Hastings, we covered that earlier. And the second one is a request from Green for Life to have garbage boxes along Route 19 from Strathorne to Port Hastings on the right-hand side moved. So right now, in our contract, we have that GFL has to collect from one side of the road at the time. And what that means is they go up Route 19, they turn around, and they come back down Route 19. It's inefficient for them to do that. And it takes a lot of time. The request is for the municipality to have residents move their garbage bins across the road. This, to my knowledge, hasn't been requested before now. And just looking for some direction on how you want to do this, if we want to move forward with it.
Is, if I'm a resident, I'm on the right side of the road and I gotta move it to the left side?
No, it just, I'm on the right-hand side. So if you're cutting from Strathorne to Port Hastings, the right-hand side.
So, but my house is on the left, let's say.
Yeah.
So I gotta move it across the road. What happens if I'm not the landowner across...
That's my question.
Across there.
I know, I don't yet. So that's really the question. Do you want us to start digging into this and really figure out how? If this is possible, how does this happen? Or do we want to just go back to GFL and say, it's your contract, it's stipulated in the contract, figure it out?
I can see, I can see some issues with some people that say, I don't want your garbage and garbage box blown around on my side of the road. You know, when you have garbage boxes, sometimes things get, the crows get into a bag that was left outside of it because there wasn't enough room in it or whatever. And all of a sudden, that is, creates a mess. And if it's blown into somebody else's, well, kept here, they're gonna be upset. So I'm open to, I'm open to certainly, council to weigh in on this as well. But it's something we need to think seriously, I think, to make sure we don't stir up, we don't, that we don't have to. But if it's, if it's an easy solution and someone has that, well, I'm all about efficiency too. So anybody else, like John?
I don't know if it's a good idea or a bad idea. But I know on the TransCanada, with the lighter garbage bags, when you get a tractor trailer doing the 100 kilometers, they pull them out on the road. That has happened a few times because they got calls on that. And even in Glendale, Catons District, a lot of people are complaining about that and they have to put them further in their driveway. But if we went and had to put it on the other side for them to pick it up on the left or the right, we really can't put it on somebody else's property. Inside his driveway fairly far, so the tractor trailer wouldn't pull it. That's one worry about it.
This is a safety issue, I think, there.
You're crossing the TransCanada.
Yeah, or any highway where you have a big heavy bag and traffic coming.
Interesting, I think, what is an elderly person trying to cross a highway. It's hard enough sometimes, so to get to the end of the driveway with the garbage thing. As opposed to having to...
And a lot of people will put the garbage in the trunk of their car, drive down to their garbage box and unload it. You see that all the time. But if they're, where are they unloading it? You can get them across. If someone got killed, unfortunately, that'd be a tragedy. But we, people would be looking at us saying, why did you ever...
Change something that's been done forever? Yeah. I just look at, you know, if I don't own the property across the road and I'm putting my garbage there. But there's other people that aren't as tidy with things. You wouldn't want their garbage box on your property, I don't think, you know?
I'm just saying, most of the population is not gonna understand the reasoning behind this. And it's obviously gonna cause a lot of disruption. And so I don't know why we wanna do that. Right?
I also, I also see people using a wheelbarrow with a mat over it or something and taking it to the end of the road.
Yes.
Well, if that's across the road and it's blown over or something, and then that garbage spread over that person's lawn, it's the middle of the way. I've just, so I guess I would, maybe a recommendation could be go back to GFL and say, how do you guys propose this? Have you done this in other areas? If you've got, you could tell them our concerns. And if they have some magical solution to those concerns, which I know they will, feel free to bring them forward. I don't wanna shut the door on them. But I think we're hearing around the table that there are major concerns for safety and garbage and other landowners and... concerns for safety and garbage and other landowners and, and uh, you know, a lot. And not everybody uses a garbage box, I don't think, either, really.
No, no, I don't use one. Bears.
When they, and sometimes the crows will get into that, depending on what's in it. So, anyway, any, any thoughts on that, Erin, or any?
No, uh before we went, uh spending too much time on it, I just wanted to bring to you to, to get your opinion, if you wanted us to dig further in, or if you just wanted to go back to GFL with that, with that answer.
Can I have a question?
Sure.
Being new and uh GFL come into, since they come into the scene before me, uh how long is their contract for?
So it is a pre- or contract with two one-year options to green, so total five, ten to some along, so.
Right, and how much money do we save by having them, I wonder?
Well.
It's.
We had a detailed analysis.
But yeah, we did.
And we did.
I think it's at about twenty-four percent on average that people in this town would save.
Yeah.
But I mean, if they sign the contract.
They did sign the contract, so there is.
Right.
There's time savings.
Yeah.
So she agreed with it, yeah?
Okay, thank you.
So it would be addressed in the contract, though?
Correct.
Anybody think any different? Do we hold them to the contract? Because, but it's, I think it's important, and if you need a letter from council, it's important for them to know why. We're not just trying to be difficult here, it's.
There's a lot of safety issues.
There's a lot, there's probably four or five issues there that we don't see a way around. That suffice for now, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Could I ask?
Yeah.
I should have asked it before. Um, down the Eden Road, this lady, it's four weeks now, she just called me again this morning, ten forty-two, Eden Road, they never had their garbage collected. They called Andy Kanish, and nothing happened.
Did you?
Ten forty-two, uh.
Ten forty-two.
Irene Bright.
Okay.
Irene Bright.
Okay.
But the thing, the problem is, they don't know. Sometimes they'll go in the road, turn at her driveway and go out. But Eden Road is a right-through affair, and there's quite a few other houses on it, and I don't know why they're not complaining. And then a lot of people kind of upset with calling Andy Kanish. They wanna call somebody near Ness County and, I guess, give you crap or something.
Yeah.
But no, their uh, their service is not, you know, they call, people call, and it's just kind of, okay, good enough, and it's not, you know, for, this is, it's a month.
Yeah, so if, and this goes for, for all residents, if people, so the contract is set up, it's a service-based contract, so as part of that, they are taking on the responsibility of receiving residents' calls and correcting um missed pickups. So that is a service that we're paying GFL to provide for us. But if people are calling week over week and they're not getting a resolution, then that's when I wanna know about it, so I can escalate that concern.
Okay, good. If you could look after that, please?
Yeah, definitely.
But no, the thing, every, like this morning, I guess she turned her boyfriend or husband, had to go out and pick up the garbage again. And they'll put it out the next week, same thing.
Yeah, let me know if, if residents.
Okay.
And not getting a resolution, which I don't.
Very good then. Thank you.
Okay, any, any more on that? We've kinda come to a conclusion?
Right.
Okay, going to number five, update Shetty Camp bylaw, MPS and land use bylaw public hearing. Keith, are you wanting to speak to that one?
There it is, so. So this is just an update on the public hearing to be held, uh for the amendments being sought for the Shetty Camp Municipal Planning Strategy and Land Use Bylaw. Uh staff were directed to look into this further and speak with um EDPC, Eastern District Planning, so we did do some additional research um on that, and in particular, having a public hearing, um and being compliant with, within COVID-19, and just even yesterday, there was some additional um restrictions put in place, uh announced by uh the province. So it's being, becoming even more difficult to have such sessions, but uh, follow-up with John Bain, he did provide some of the following in, information, uh that EDPC has successfully conducted Zoom-only public hearings in the past, um but they also have public hearings that are in council chambers, uh but allowed a Zoom option for the public to participate. On top of that, they've also had public hearings where it is a requirement and advertised as such that those wishing to speak need to preregister. So they've done all those things, uh council, and it suggests some of those ideas, so they, they are able to uh, to actually respond to those. Uh but he's not been part, EDPC has not been part of any public hearing that allowed just for written submissions only. So they've allowed for uh full public Zoom sessions or a combination of both, um but where people had to preregister, obviously, for the Zoom, but not ever to date at a public hearing where only uh written submissions were provided. EDPC also suggests that we, in order, if that's ever considered, just to have only written submissions, that it has to be careful not to restrict participation of marginalized communities. So that's why they haven't done that in the past. So uh written submission-only requirement would disadvantage those who have, may have literacy issues. Similarly, a Zoom-only meeting could disadvantage anyone who may be experiencing some uh inability to have that type, type of technology in their home, or don't have internet connection. Um the phone-in option for Zoom may be away around that as well, uh who provided a toll-free number. Uh EDPC's preference, though, is to hold holding public hearings with preregistrat, registration requirement, and that both Zoom and in-person options are provided uh for presentations. And of course, if the pandemic were, were since uh Zoom, might be our only work, workable option. So that's the update from, from that. So we still haven't set the date for, for that uh public hearing. Um and I'm sure folks that in the Shetty Camp and La Wadda region, uh would like this to be moved forward, so we can look at uh that recommendation and schedule for something for, around the committee of all meeting in January, if council uh so wishes, and we would look at this direction to provide both uh in-person and Zoom presentations. Um but Zoom would have to be preregistered.
Yeah, any thoughts on that, councillor Poirier, which?
Well, I, I don't know, it's, the only thing, it's about fairness and make sure that we have, you know, we heard councillors here previously, you know, we were, Warren and I, we attended it, you know, at the school auditorium, and we only had one group. And I had calls, you know, that some people don't really agree. A lot of business people don't agree with it. Sometimes the, even the CEC, some of them don't agree with it. So I don't wanna go there and just say, I just wanna make sure that everybody has a chance to say, and so that we all hear what's going on, and then we can decide as a council and the city planning and the CAO. So what is the best way? Is there any way that we could announce it, that for example, if Tanya Thibault has, is talking on behalf of Shetty Camp, she's against it, she would, uh, they would choose Tanya Thibault to attend, or, and at the same time, there might not be no people at all. That's the biggest problem, you know? I think would be, personally, maybe the best thing to do would be anybody, you know, we're looking for, or if we could advertise, we're looking for uh having a meeting for the, you know, this bylaw, anybody that would be interested to come or make a presentation, registered, and then you, we would see how many people would be coming in.
Register ahead of time.
I don't know how it could be done, you know, but I, I think if we advertise, I go on the radio, we put it on Facebook, and we, you know, and then see.
Well, actually, John Bain's office, I believe, right, is responsible for the advertising.
Yeah, yeah, and then we might have a, a few.
Right, yeah.
We could have it in the.
Yeah, just at Eastern District Planning.
That's right, that, oh yeah.
That's their responsibility.
Oh yeah, definitely, definitely, that's, yeah, yeah.
Personally, I like having the public meeting.
Yeah.
If we can, but.
Oh yeah, definitely.
Restrictions. Um, I think some of the restrictions were lifted a little bit in Halifax, as we currently.
Some of them were lifted, but other ones were planned down here, so.
Okay, yeah. So we're, we're far from being out of the woods there, being vaccinated.
No, no gatherings over ten.
It's over ten, so.
No gatherings over ten.
So that, that's not a me.
A funeral or a faith service. Wedding.
It doesn't come into, it wasn't immediate effect.
December thirty, December twenty-first, yeah? Yeah, next, next Monday, they come into effect.
See, my only problem, uh, reason is that I don't wanna have a motion pass, and then they'll all come, not all, but the business people come to me and say, look, we never had a public meeting. You know, you had a meeting with the people that were against it, but we didn't have any people that you were, you were there, the people that was there, they were all.
It was kind of one-sided.
That was pretty well one-sided. There was only one or two that I, you know, that were there. So it was all sided, so there is uh that possibility that can pop in, and then it could be up to my.
But we're delta set of cards that we have to.
Navigate.
Navigate with and use, utilize. So I think having the tools that are available to us, I guess our question has to be, what's the best approach to be fair to everybody?
Yeah.
To allow everybody to have a fair and decent say, and, you know, um, using Zoom, I think, is a good approach, although there may be some that don't understand or have never used that, but we could have it set up somewhere where they could go to that, that spot and.
Yeah.
And register, say, they might not have the equipment to do it, or, so they could be going to an office somewhere where they are able to go in and present to us if they like, or, see, if you had, you just gotta make sure everything, I think, is available, that we can possibly make available, and staying safe at the same time. And that's all we could do, unless we put it off longer, and that may or may not help us.
And I think the most important part of that, Alfred, would be getting that information out prior, as to what it is, that, what form you're trying to, and I think then it kind of eases your.
Yeah, yeah. I'll ask our CAO.
And your numbers of people, too.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, properly advertise promoted using Zoom and ready presentations. That's probably the way we're gonna have to go here.
Yes, and I think EDPC can put that in play.
Okay, so we wanna give direction to our CA to work with Eastern District Planning to move in that direction?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think we need a motion for that, do we, or should, no? It's a recommendation that, or it's a directive, I guess, that staff move in that direction. And uh, once you get some dates down, let us know as soon as possible. We can make sure we're all clear for that as well. So, any other questions on that one? Okay. Timing of council meetings, there's a big one. Where are we with that? Do you wanna speak to it?
Well, council has discussed this in the past, and they made a recommendation, or they agreed to uh move forward till the end of December with uh, with the regular schedule of committee at the whole at nine-thirty, and then uh regular council meetings at uh, at one-thirty. Uh we do have um new counselors uh within, within the group, and there was a discussion about potentially moving the community of the whole meetings to, sorry, the regular council meetings till three in the afternoon. Uh that would be on the first, um, first Thursday of every month. Uh there was some discussion around the, how long those meetings would take, and how can we make sure that we finish up within that five, five-thirty timeframe. Uh so staff, if the council want to move in that direction, we'll be able to ensure um that we don't have as many presentations on, uh and really focus on presentations and those detailed updates to council during committee of the whole, and that will allow uh that agenda to advance a bit quicker at the regular council meeting, as it already is, because we're bringing quite a bit of recommendations that are discussed early here to, to the regular council meetings. So um, we do feel we can work with council to compress that amount of time required uh for the regular uh council meetings to, to about that two-hour time period. And um, so we just, that's on the agenda again, because council did uh ask that they would, or did council agree to move forward with our regular timeframes till the end of this month, and that council would provide it. We've provided an opportunity to again discuss uh the timing of both committee of the whole and our regular monthly meeting.
Okay, who wants to go first?
I'll take the shot, I don't. Personally, I'd like to see the meeting start at nine-thirty in the morning, committee of the whole and regular council and, just, you know, that's kind of the, the beginning of the day and whatever. And, you know, maybe if you get caught in work somewhere, you can't, it's hard to come at one-thirty.
Okay, any other thoughts?
My issue with it was, uh, because it really doesn't matter to me what time we meet, but you, we're supposed to be able to have the public, you know, it's open to the public, but most of the public cannot come during the day, because they mostly work during the day. So my thought was that if we had it later in the day, that people could attend, or, and I believe most of the other municipalities have theirs in the evenings.
They do, I actually wish.
Yeah, so, you know, the other thing, it's, you know, if somebody is, we don't wanna um deter anyone from running for council, because I think it has to be during the day either. We, we don't wanna exclude people from joining our ranks, but uh, so my thing is, I really think it needs to be at a time when the public could potentially attend. I mean, I don't, I think there's anyone here from the public today. Um, and I don't know, I'm, I'm only new, so I don't know what they normally, if they would attend in the evenings of those sessions.
You gotta be scrapping real bad to get to public.
Well, yeah, bigger issue.
I had people in this community since, since I've been elected, and I'm just sharing this, um, the, the old meetings, they were, they were public, they're all public, but the time here in Port Hood was always at, I think it was six-thirty. And people would say, oh, going back to long days, oh, they knew there was a council meeting at the courthouse because the lights were all on, lots of cars circled all around the parking lot. So I'm going back a long way, but people did miss that. And so they just don't, you know, they don't come to these meetings now because of, we're in set time, right? So that's just a thought thrown out there, and I, and I have been asked that. Is it possible that we could do anything?
I would agree with that.
They said, we would love to see you new counselors saying, but we can't go, right? So.
I would agree with that.
New councils and all councils.
One time, we would have a meeting in District One, then one time we would have a District Two, District Three, District Four, District Five, District Six. But uh, just for the people of Port Hood, you know, the people of Shetty Camp won't be coming. You know, I'm not saying this in a harsh way, but I mean, it's all about fairness, you know, and myself.
And I don't know if it was just Port Hood that were attending this.
I know, no, I know, but I know, like, I know down home, they won't, they won't, it's too far.
Absolutely.
Good idea.
But that's just my thought, and if you, if you want, three o'clock sounds great because of, you know, I know, I realize there's other, there's other, uh, there's team here, we all have to work together, picking at every single time, and three would be, would be nice. Um.
So is that just the committee of the whole, or?
We're talking about, we're talking the timing of both meetings.
Of both meetings.
Of both meetings.
Now, that doesn't mean they both be, what? But we don't, that doesn't mean they both have to be at the same time.
Yeah, so you could do one.
Committee of the whole has handled, since I started four years ago, there was no committee of the whole meetings when I started and, but they were incorporated and we handle, as you can see today, the staff reports and a lot of the deep or business stuff that we have to handle. And then we sort of have some time to review that and think about it. And then at the council meeting, those recommendations, if made here, get ratified through a voting process at the council meeting. So the council meetings tend to be a lot shorter since we, because we're doing a lot of the work at the C O W meeting. And that work normally would have been done, council meetings would be a lot longer if we weren't doing that. So we're balanced at over two days instead of one kind of which is.
So, yeah, even if we had one, continue with the committee of the whole at the nine thirty and then maybe change the council, regular council meeting to.
Council have to look.
An evening or late afternoon session where people could attend that normally couldn't. Because we're here for the public.
The only, the only big thing in the next two to three months is obviously our weather conditions too. But it could be a blizzard at nine in the morning or at three in the afternoon. Certainly at three, you'd have a chance to see where the day is going and have a chance to make adjustments to that, rather than try to get up at nine o'clock in the morning and say, should we go into Port Hood or not? And our C A O and myself would be probably left to make that decision. I would, so at three o'clock, if you're gonna be driving home in the dark, like councillor Poyet mentioned earlier as well. For me personally, it doesn't matter. I can be here at three, I don't work anywhere else, so I can be here at three o'clock, at six o'clock, at nine o'clock in the morning. So I'm very flexible. I wanna do, as Ward, and I wanna do what works for everybody else, so.
Well, I look at you and Alfred, I mean, that's a long drive to Port Hood if you're driving at night.
Driving doesn't bother me in the winter. I got my truck and I feel fairly secure. If it's, if I don't feel it's safe enough to go, then nobody should be going in there probably.
Yeah.
And Alfred, you may feel it is a long drive.
Oh, yeah, it is.
You go through some pretty bad areas there, through Ramon.
And there's no problem with a four-wheel drive, and I did for fifteen years. I went to, across the North Mountain and I crossed the park for fifteen years. I mean, that, I'm used to it and I love it. But it's just the point of trying to be, I don't feel like getting home at ten, eleven o'clock if we're gonna have meeting at five and then it's at nine.
So we started at three thirty.
That's what I'm saying, you know, if we have it at three and we say two hours, okay, I can live with that. Five o'clock, I'm out.
And it's once a month.
Not once a month, yeah. But can we?
Can you do it in two hours?
Can we do it in two hours? A lot of days we can, but if you get into some in-camera stuff happening that gets into some serious debate, you could spend half an hour just there, you know. So we need a little bit of flexibility, as chair, I will need a little bit of flexibility there. And, you know, but if it's, if it's a nice evening out, we'll, but if it's a dirty night, we might say, look, we gotta be out of here at a decent time.
Was there any, any questions on the other committees? Because it seems like all the other committees are in the daytime, you know. Do you have any problem with that, you know, like the committees?
I haven't heard anything. Have you, C A O?
Because the senior home, it's a data, oh, sorry, Keith.
I know with the new straight area transit, there's a number of councillors that are able to attend from other districts to attend those during the day because there were commitments. They're basically requesting that the timeframe be switched for those. And that may happen because for some of the other regional committees as well, because they're just getting together now after the election. So there might be a few others that would have to adjust their meeting time.
I know they were struggling to get people to the first straight area transit meeting that I attended. And I think if another person, one more person was missing, they wouldn't have headed for them, so. So I'm sure that'll be discussed. There'll be a new chair elected tomorrow, actually, hopefully, and.
Well, I think there was an issue with the Alan J McCacken Airport Committee as well. We were trying to find a date to meet and a time, and it had to be later because there were other, because there's people from other municipalities on that as well. So that was, need to be later.
But I think we can leave those decisions up to that committee, depending on who's on it.
The key, so, I guess.
If they feel they need to meet in the evening, great. If they wanna meet at nine o'clock in the morning, that's fine too. It depends on what their committee members are available for, so I guess I'd direct them that way. But for us, so do we want, and we, this can be on a trial basis to see how it works. If it's not working out, we can always bring it back to the table.
And it even winter months if you wanted to.
Are we zooming for the first month?
January seventh, I thought we were zooming. Is that correct? Or we were going to decide today?
I think council was gonna decide the day on that first.
I don't think we have any choice though with the number of people.
Right now.
Right now, the January tenth is the provincial guidelines for, right now, for gatherings, so.
Right. Yeah, so we might be.
That's where they extended it to yesterday.
That could change maybe, but.
Well, it's not gonna change before January tenth.
No.
No, they put it from December twenty first to January tenth. So to cover the holidays for people, to kind of keep people away.
But right now, that number wouldn't work for us here.
No. So, we're gonna do Zoom? Is that what we're asking?
I would say leave it up to the C A O and myself. And if we can meet together in a safe way, we'll do that. But if we have to go Zoom, we'll let everybody know. Am I okay with?
I'd rather decide today. Wouldn't you rather decide today?
If you want, if you want, we can try a Zoom meeting. The safe way would be to go with, if you're gonna make a decision today.
Right.
I think you have to decide to go the Zoom.
For the seventh.
The seventh, because, you know, we could, we could decide that, but if everything is wide open then for some reason, well, we mean, just send an email out, say, we're gonna meet in person because that thing's lifted. But right now, let's say it'll be a Zoom meeting, if that's what council wishes. Your guys' decision.
I don't think it's gonna change for the tenth.
Yeah, probably not.
Those guidelines are in place because they put them in place for the holidays. So they said from December twenty first to January tenth for gatherings or whatever, so.
Yeah.
You know, I'd just rather know, so if I'm, you know, have a meeting with somebody, I can say, okay, I have to be here that day. You know what I mean, ahead, because people were looking for a person to.
Okay, so, well, someone wanna make a motion that the next meeting be a Zoom meeting?
I'll make a motion that January seventh, we meet by Zoom.
Okay, someone wanna second that?
I'll second that.
It's moved by Deputy Ward McCaskey and seconded by Councillor Gillis that we meet by Zoom on the January seventh, am I right in the date?
Yeah.
Meeting. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay.
What do, what?
What time is that?
Yeah, what particular time does your council want that to commence?
What about, how many of us have to work and they can't control their hours? There's John, we have a.
How many?
Penn.
I work during the day.
You can't control your hours.
I'm here today for committee on the whole.
Yeah.
But I take this day without pay for the straight virtual school board. In fairness, I'm not taking two pays.
Right.
So I work that out each month, so, but the other, the other day, I have to take that one also. Right, so.
So and myself, myself, it's.
I'm finished at two forty every day.
Yeah.
So I can be here for three o'clock.
Let's do the three o'clock Zoom.
Yeah, three is good because the other half hour we're talking about can be from three to five, right? So, I mean, it's, I'm just putting out there, if I'm the only one sitting here, just requesting that, it's not a big deal. I can still navigate.
But it's not just about you.
But it's not about me.
And I also.
I've gotten, there's a lot of feedback about, since I've been elected, saying, I would love to be able to go to your council meetings, you know. Like, but, I mean, I know it's sticky, it's very tough, right? So I, I, I just.
Because I work during the day as well, but I can, I am flexible to agree, so. But for me, it's more about.
Juggling.
Yeah, it's a lot of juggling, but it's fine.
We have them at three. I don't think there's any difference between having them at three or one thirty for the public. You know, if you're concerned about the public, I don't, like, I think a lot of people, if they're getting off work at five o'clock, say, you know, on average, if people are working and wanna come, they'll be getting off work around five and then go home, have supper or whatever. You know what I mean? So there's no difference between one thirty and three as far as public coming to our meetings, I don't think.
Another, another question too is, if we go after five o'clock, we have to realize that maybe the staff are gonna kill me, but, you know, we're gonna have to, have to pay them overtime and they're gonna have to be working, if I'm right, you know, more than the.
Oh, absolutely.
Maybe one, two, three, four, five, and, you know, like, so I don't think it would be advisable for the staff after five and money-wise for after five, you know? Because it, like, I know the first year I was councillor, eight years ago, there was nobody here giving us reports except Joe and Dewar and another councillor, and that's it.
Right.
Now we have a more broader and expanded group all across that, you know, we have different sectors, different divisions that we all like to hear from and so. And then I bet you they don't wanna work overtime and it's, at the same time, it's gonna cost us, it's gonna cost us more money, that's why I, the five o'clock thing is.
Typically, the committee of the whole is where they do their presentations, right?
Yeah.
So.
But we still would have other staff.
Still need staff there. But what do they do in other municipalities? Do they give them time off and move? Two hours later that day or how do they work? Do you know?
No, but we can, we can look into that further.
So do we wanna go for three o'clock on the Senate? Simple question.
I'm fine, three, I'm excited. Till we decide what we're doing.
Yeah, so that's a Zoom, but that's a Zoom meeting, so, and that'll give people that are working a chance to get away from that and be available on Zoom. And the thing with Zoom is, I could be in Sydney as long as I get internet access to the meeting, right? So it gives some good flexibility there, although I will always push for a regular type meeting when it's appropriate and say, I think we just could be able to public that, sure.
Absolutely.
And we can continue to, as COVID hopefully improves its ugly face or gets ironed out a little bit, we can, we can look at this where we're not complicated by that so much, maybe down the road over the next year. Get something that works, maybe even better for the public. One thing we were doing, and we stopped doing it, and I guess we, I know Steph has a lot on the plate, but we can bring it back, is we were videotaping all our meetings and they were online the next day for people to, so a person wanted to watch the meeting. And I know a lot of people took advantage of that. Anywhere are we with that, Keith? Is that something we're gonna get back to at some point, do you think?
Yes, I just don't know the timing yet.
Yeah, so. Okay, so it's three o'clock, Zoom meeting on January seventh. Okay. Write-off interest for Nova Scotia Health Authority.
Excuse me?
Can you speak to that?
So as you are aware, the Nova Scotia Health Authority owes two years of area rates for fire protection and wastewater services. They not paid last year and they cannot pay this year, so interest has accumulated. I contacted David Perry with the N S H A and he was surprised to hear that they weren't paid. So whether those bills did not make it to his desk or not, he wasn't aware. So less than a week after he, I spoke with him, the money was wired into our bank account and the arrears of the area rates were paid. He also indicated that the N S H A of the province, it's not their policy to pay interest charges. We've written off the interest for the hospitals in the past. The amounts are fully allowed for, so there's no impact on the income statement. So I would recommend that interest in the amount of twelve thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents be written off for the hospitals.
How much was your bill?
They paid a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
Any questions for our C E F O on that? Any comments?
These excesses, the province, they don't pay interest. And these same people that made the law, do they pay interest on their bills if they're over? And the people in Inverness County and across the province, if we're late with our taxes or whatever, bank payments, we pay interest.
We do.
I'd say just keep sending them a bill. They'll get sick of you and they'll pay it.
I think it's fair too because I know if I was late, I'm paying interest on something.
Yeah, you just can't go with the, I'm not paying interest.
I can't say, well, I'm sorry, I missed the last two years and I'm gonna pay the bill and, well, forget about the interest. It doesn't happen like that, but.
Your thoughts on that, Tanya?
Well, I suspect that that amount, those amounts will be, continue to be on our books every year and we will have to allow for interest because we fully allow for interest, so there will be a cost to allow for those amounts.
So do you feel we would ever get anywhere with them on that?
I suspect that they're just not going to pay it and will continue to carry it, continue to carry it, accumulating more and more.
So what do we have, like, okay, so they didn't pay it for two years. So say after the first year, does a reminder go out or?
Oh, yes. Yes, we send, we send reminders.
Right, yeah, they'd be treated like anybody else that would be behind.
And the properties, there were some issues with the addresses of the properties and the customer I D. So there were three different customer I Ds for these three parcels. We've since corrected that. So they are going to the appropriate department.
Okay.
They are the, on top of their line, they have three different, so not the same name.
Right.
It was in a different regional health authority and then there was the Nova Scotia Health Authority and then the third property using a different name completely. So whether they did receive the bills in a timely manner is, I can't confirm that.
Right.
But our recommendation would be, we've done it in the past, we'll stay on top of it and we're not going to profit.
Do they bill us for anything?
No, so I can't.
Yeah, right.
I could do it for the, we can pay the hospital foundation, so I could reduce their payments by the interest amount.
No, no, we're not touching that.
I would just say write it off, just, because you know you're not gonna get any.
We've had some history of this in the past too, right? Where we went through, was it three or four years maybe?
Five years and we ended up writing off, like, each day amount was over seventy thousand dollars.
Wow.
But each year, that was an expense on our income base. We had to, we had to fully allow for the income tax our practice here. Within, within two hours of my phone call with Dave Perry, he sent me a email with a check.
Right.
So they processed it immediately.
Yeah.
It's too bad, but it's. The new councillor, you're gonna realize that the business of the municipality is very different from the regular business that I did for the last fifty years. You know, it's so easy to say, you know, when you're outside looking in. You know, it's so easy to say, you know, when you're outside looking in, I'll be do, I would do this, I would collect this, I would get that interest, I would do that, but how do you do it? It's impossible, you know, and it's one of those things that.
You can't sue the government.
No, exactly.
And it's costing us money too, right? With staffing, with time, and, and.
The whole.
Planners and all that stuff, I guess.
Yeah.
To allow for that's costing us, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, we're only gonna incur more expense by, so.
But you should actually, because they did pay their area rates, you should see a positive number on the income statement. So, last year, we had to allow, I think, for an additional seventy-some thousand dollars in, in the allowance for arrears. So, now that they've paid, I suspect that we'll be able to reduce that, it would be a negative number, which will benefit.
Right, oh, absolutely.
Oh, it's good that it's being paid, looked after, that quick one, she made the call, because it didn't happen that quick the last time.
Yeah, no, I went back in such a few years and tried to find the contact that I spoke with directly, and I found that, I called him, and I also called Municipal Affairs, or emailed him several times, and he didn't respond, and then they finally responded, and he had received two phone calls prior to me calling him that day.
So, is there a way to flag them for the next bill?
Yes.
That's where we'll start, the next bill.
Yeah, I had a phone call to him, and he turned it off.
Yeah. Okay, someone want, this is a committee of the whole meeting, and I think we already made a motion, uh, uh, put in for a motion there, but we're supposed to make recommendations to our council meeting, so, does someone want to make a recommendation that we break this off, or?
I'll, I'll move that we write off the interest to the.
It's a recommendation.
Recommendation.
And to councillor McLennan's point, we can follow up with the province to find out if that is actually a writ policy or a practice of theirs to address the, the interest, so. But I've heard in many different municipalities, that it's just the common practice of, of the province not to, not to look at those interests owed on these type of, of places.
Okay, is everybody fine with that? We need a second to make a recommendation. Okay, East Coast Credit Union borrowing resolution, line of credit.
So, each year, we have a line of credit with the East Coast Credit Union, it's one hundred and five million dollars, that's our overdraft. We typically pay for capital projects out of pocket prior to receiving funding, so that's why we use that overdraft. We haven't been, we haven't had to use it in a while. So, each year, a resolution needs to be made by council to approve this temporary borrowing resolution, which is the one point five. But there are two resolutions here. One is, in the past, that one point five has been connected to our general operating fund, so the general operating fund, we have seven different funds, and so our general operating fund has the line of credit attached to it. So, I had requested a couple of months ago because of the cash flow in the water utility to break that one point five and attach one point two to the general operating fund and three hundred thousand to the water operating fund, because when the water fund is short, we have to transfer money, council has to approve that transfer. They don't net all of the accounts together, they used to do that, and it wasn't an issue, but now the accounts are separate. So, they made that, that change for me, and, but we need a resolution for, for that as well, to do that. And it just saves quite a bit of a mid-work, because I'm having to do the water bank recs every single day. We have quite a few water projects, capital projects, that are being funded by other sources, and so that money's gonna get at the bank account, but it's not being recovered in a, in a quick enough manner. So, they did make that change for us. So, these resolutions, there are two, as I mentioned, and you will have to read them word for word for the recommendation.
You're gonna read them for us?
Pardon me?
You're gonna read them for us?
Okay, I can.
Tanya?
Sure.
I owe you one.
Remember that. So, the first one is the actual borrowing resolution for one point five. So, whereas it is necessary to borrow the sum of one point five million dollars from East Coast Credit Union to meet the now current expenditure of the corporation until such time as the taxes to be levied therefore can be collected, be it therefore resolved by the municipal council of the corporation as follows. One, that the warden with the treasurer of the corporation be, and they are hereby authorized under the seal of the corporation, to borrow from East Coast Credit Union the sum of one million, five hundred thousand dollars, as the same may be required from time to time to meet the now current expenditure of the corporation, which said expenditure has been duly authorized by the council. Two, that the said warden with the treasurer, if for said, be, and they are hereby authorized to pay or allow to the said credit union interest on the sum, said sum of one point five million dollars at a rate of prime percent per annum, which may be paid or allowed in advance by way of discount or otherwise, howsoever as they deem best. Three, that the said sum of one point five million dollars, so to be borrowed, shall be made payable on or before the thirty-first day of March two thousand and twenty-one next, and the promissory note or notes of the corporation, if any, given therefore if made payable before the said thirty-first day of March, may be renewed by the said warden and treasurer from time to time, but no renewal thereof shall fall due later than the said first day of April two thousand and twenty-one. Four, that the promissory note or notes of the corporation sealed with the corporate seal and signed by the warden and treasurer of the corporation to be given from time to time as required, insecurity for the amounts borrowed from time to time under the provisions of this resolution. And five, that the giving of such renewal note or notes, as aforesaid, shall not be deemed satisfaction to the said credit union of the said advance or interest, but as evidence only in indebtedness. Passed in open council this, it will be the seventh day of January two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay. You've heard the banking resolution. Someone want to recommend it for approval at the next council meeting?
I'll recommend it.
Any further discussion on the recommendation? So, it's recommended for approval for next council. Next one, thank you for reading them, by the way.
Yes.
So, this is a borrowing resolution, and then a guarantee will be the second one?
Oh, I thought that was both of them combined, no, well.
Sure.
Okay.
Be resolved that the customer is hereby authorized to a, borrow money upon the credit of the customer, b, issue, reissue seller pledge debt obligations of the customer, c, give a guarantee on behalf of the customer to secure performance of an obligation of any purpose, d, mortgage, hypothec, pledge, or otherwise create a security interest in all or any property of the customer owned or subsequently acquired to secure any debt obligation of, of the customer, e, to sign bills, notes, contracts, and other evidences of, or securities for money borrowed or to be borrowed, and that the council and the warden and treasurer are hereby authorized and empowered from time to time to exercise all or any of the foregoing powers on behalf of the customer in such a manner and subject to such regulations and restrictions as they may see fit, and they are hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the customer all documents necessary to give effect to the foregoing. Three, that a certified copy of this resolution be delivered to East Coast Credit Union Limited, the credit union, and constitute authority and effect until notice of any amendment, alteration, or revocation shall be given to the said credit union. It is hereby certified by the undersigned that the foregoing is a true copy of a resolution passed at a meeting of the council or board held on the seventh day of January two thousand and twenty-one, and that said resolution is now in full force, in full force and effect.
Any questions on the resolution? Someone want to make a recommendation to accept, to recommend it for acceptance at our next council meeting?
I recommend to accept it at our next council meeting.
So, it's recommended by councillor Jism. Any other discussions? Okay, thank you very much, appreciate you reading that for us. Okay. Is everybody doing okay washing, or do we need a break, or? Everybody fine? There is some water and snacks behind us there, if anybody wants to help themselves. Okay, audit committee meeting date. Is that next now?
Did we miss number nine?
Number nine.
Number nine, notice of motion accessibility advisory.
Notice of motion accessibility advisory committee.
Yeah.
So, it says, an update to council, the Accessibility Act requires municipality, county, Inverness, and all municipalities in Nova Scotia to develop and implement an accessibility plan. Initially, municipalities were required to have this accessibility plan in place by April two thousand and twenty-one, but due to the results of COVID-19, the provincial government has announced that it'll be extending that deadline, but that extension has not been announced as to what date that will be, so we're still waiting that new date. The Accessibility Act requires municipalities establish an accessibility advisory committee. The role of the accessibility advisory committee is to provide counsel on identifying, preventing, and eliminating barriers to people with disabilities in municipal programs, services, initiatives, and facilities, and to develop an accessibility plan for council to approve. Accessibility Advisory Committee is being instituted, instituted in a way of policy because of section twenty-three, one, C of Municipal Government Act states, the council may make policies, providing for committees, and conferring powers and duties upon them except for the power to expend funds. So, according to municipal policy relating to the adoption of policies, a new policy must be brought forth before council by way of notice of motion from one of the councillors. The notice of motion is in your package, and it must be brought forth at least seven days before council can make a resolution regarding this new policy. Staff prepared, prepared a templated notion, notice of motion document form, and you can see that in your package, and this can be available to all councillors if they wish to use this going forward. The notice of motion, this particular notice of motion is coming from ward Granton, and it is for council to approve the accessibility advisory committee policy at the next meeting of council. This policy was prepared by staff pursuant to the Accessibility Act, that clearly outlines what must be in, contained within the policy. So, that draft policy is also included in the package and re-reviewed, and if this motion, notice of motion is advanced, that's being put forth by the warden at the next upcoming regular council meeting, council would then be able to approve the policy, or the, the, yes, the policy.
Any questions or discussion on? Someone want to recommend it for approval at the next council meeting?
I recommend it.
Oh, second?
No, you don't need a second. Recommended by councillor McLennan?
Perfect.
Thank you, hope for discussion, we'll move on. Just before we do, I just let everybody know for the new councillors here, I chair the Built Environment Standards Committee, which is a committee of about twenty-two people from around the province, architects, building inspectors, persons with disabilities that are putting together the framework of the accessibility standards to be adopted by government. It'll go from us to the board, then from the board, I'll present it to the minister, and then the minister will do their tweaking with it, put it in the language it needs to be legally, and then it goes through all the, all the things to prove, to prove an act, sort of go through law amendments and all that, so it's a long way to go here, but we're in our second phase of that, and it's going along fairly well, and so it's good to see my own municipality getting on board and moving forward, and I appreciate staff preparing that.
Excellent.
Okay, and if anybody ever has any questions about that, or not happy to appoint people in the right direction. Audit committee, uh, meeting date. Keith, did you have anything on that, or?
Well, the municipality, of course, the municipality on an annual basis goes through the audit process, and as part of that audit process, the audit committee plays a vital role. The audit committee will be assigned the duty to select a auditor for this upcoming year. Tanya's just gonna outline how that process works, and we're hoping to at least pencil in a, a meeting date for the audit committee in January, so that we can, at that time, review the responses to an RFP that would go out for auditing services, and then bring the recommendation from the audit committee to council on the selection of the auditor.
Okay, any questions or discussions around that, or that process?
So, council, or the, one of the duties of the audit committee is to make a recommendation to council to appoint the auditor. We haven't put out an RFP in recent years, we've had contracts with Grant Thornton, who has done the audits since, since prior to my being in this role, so for at least ten years. There are currently thirteen auditors in Nova Scotia that are allowed to, that are registered with the province in order to do a municipal audit, Grant Thornton is one of them. So, with the establishment of the audit committee, we thought that we would put out an RFP for audit services, it's been out for about a week and a half now, it's due, the deadline is December twenty-third at 10:00 PM, and we suspect we will get a few bids. So, in order to, we'd like to have an audit committee meeting on January twenty-first, prior to the committee of the whole, then a special council meeting directly after the, the audit committee meeting, to appoint the auditors, because the audit process typically starts in early January, so we would like to appoint them as soon as possible so that they can develop a work plan, and like Grant Thornton has provided a work plan each year and worked with us, and do some preliminary testing, so January twenty-first is the date that we'd like to have the audit committee meeting.
So, that's, who are on council? And I'm on the audit committee, I believe.
Are we all? All council?
No.
No.
Oh, that's you guys, sorry.
Yeah, yeah. I believe I'm on it, right?
I'm on it.
And then there's another gentleman from, from up in Marguerie, uh. You know the names of the other two?
Oh, Pat Danberger and Casper Young.
Casper, okay, so there's three, there's four people.
There's two from the public.
Right.
And three from council, including the warden.
The warden.
And then there would be two staff members, which would be Keith and myself.
Right.
So, who from council, it's?
Just three.
Deputy Warden, Kozak, councillor Gillison.
Just to refresh my memory here. So, is everybody okay with that date on the twenty?
January twenty-first? What time would that be, Tanya? Would you like?
I would recommend that it would be, if the committee of the whole begins at nine thirty, we do this at nine thirty.
Right, that we do that at nine thirty as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
You say the committee of the whole.
Is January twenty-first?
The committee of the whole meeting, I believe, is January twenty-first.
Oh.
So, I'd like to have the audit committee meeting on that same day.
Okay.
Just till that.
Starting at the same time?
Well, I'd like to have the audit committee meeting at nine thirty, and directly following that, the committee of the whole meeting.
Okay, so we need to get the?
Special council meeting, and then committee of the whole meeting. Special council meeting and then committee of the whole meeting.
Okay. But there'd be only, yeah, it wouldn't be all council needed for that.
It would be somewhere different.
So what, do we need an hour?
Half an hour.
Half an hour, so we're starting that. You're saying, so the council needs to start at 10?
And then that would be the only agenda item. And then you could start the committee of the whole meeting at 10:15.
Okay. January 21st.
We're able to take a second to put?
Third.
I'll give you a second to put that in here.
So the committee of the audit committee comes to me for 10, the special committee, is that correct? On the 21st.
Gotcha. I'll just mention this in here and I'll be with you in a second. So that's January 21st. Here we go. We're in there. Everybody clear on that?
And the only thing we're doing at that audit meeting is to?
Review the?
Review the?
The RFP.
Review the submission?
Yeah.
And select and make recommendations to.
Right.
Based on our review. Okay. Thank you again. Organization review update and I'll go to.
So in your package, there's a detailed report that was provided by Davis Pierce. That was submitted to council, the previous council, on December 12th, 2017. So it was a detailed analysis that was commissioned. Council had requested to move forward a, this organizational review process. It really focused on five key areas. One was governance. So it reviewed the municipal, municipality's governance practices and it made a number of recommendations for improvement. It went through even above and beyond the fiscal process, or even above and beyond the audit that's performed every year and went into a review of the fiscal processes. It also looked at in detail the communication practices of the municipality. It did a thorough review of the HR practices of the municipality as well, with a particular focus and an individual section devoted to the public works operations. So that document that's in your package that was presented to the previous council, the previous council actually approved that document to, to be advanced by staff. It's been a foundational document for the past number of years for the budget, budgeting purposes. And council has pushed a number of these recommendations forward as priorities through the budgeting process. So we do, we, on our agenda today, we do have some sections in our agenda to kind of talk about our audit, which we reviewed just now, our auditing process. Municipality has followed suit on a number of the HR recommendations that were in that, that, that document you have before you. And as I just mentioned, it did a thorough review of our governance practices with some suggested go forwards. So it may be a good time, if council wishes, to again, maybe update this document, outline what recommendations have been advanced and have a number of updated recommendations come forward to help support this new council moving forward. So that's something for council to consider. Certainly, this, this report has really guided the municipality over the last number of years. It's because it was approved by council as, as a report and was accepted and the council wanted to see recommendations move forward. Through our budget process, every year, we would go back and revisit the recommendations and then outline what has been addressed. So this could be a very good opportunity, since we're very early stages for this new council, to really identify some new priorities that this council wants to focus on above and beyond the original recommendations. And to that, really outline which recommendations have already been addressed and, and have been basically put to bed over the last number of years. So that's just a precursor for the warden to, to get feedback from council on, on this is something that they would like to see advanced.
So I'll open it up for discussion. Anybody have any issues or questions? I think it's good. I took some time and read over that document and certainly outdated in a number of ways, but in simple ways too, like names and dates and stuff like that. But it's certainly time we do that review and look at our whole, which are our policy. And, and I'm always one in support of, of governance review as well. And, and we have someone here now that can help lead us through that. So any, I'm not gonna go around the table, but anybody have any concerns or questions?
I just think it has a lot of great recommended actions that we can move forward with and very detailed, so that's good.
Very detailed.
Very detailed.
Just needs to be updated and get our heads around that.
And it's a good point, right? Update policies or whatever.
Alfred, any questions from here? No? John? No? Okay.
Okay. So if there's a, if there's a recommendation for council to update this document, we would then, we could either proceed with reaching back out to the, to the original consultant that put the work together, or we would put that out to our RFP and then we would have some recommendations coming back to, to potentially the, well, we'd look at bringing recommendations back for a meeting in January to advance the?
What would be the cost to that, do you think?
Well, that would be part of our work before the next council meeting to get a good feel of what that expense would be.
Okay.
The original report and that full report now, Tanya would have to help me, but I think it was in the vicinity of.
Something tells me it was mid-'20s.
It's not cheap now.
But I can check on that very quickly.
But it was a very thorough process. It wasn't a month or two. They, actually, the process they went through is they interviewed a number of staff, councillors. Actually, in the report, it outlines all the consultation that went through it. They had a number of updates to council as the document was being prepared so that council could get some additional feedback in around the direction of, of where that report was going. So it was a significant amount of time and it was, it was a priority for, for council at that time to get that worked out.
So what's your feelings?
Forty-two?
Do we want to ask staff to forward this and get the, get a plan in place and some, some analysis of what the costs may be? Or do we want to have them advance it right to an RFP? I guess my question would be using the, if we went back to the original consultant, which could be anyway, do we then not have to do the RFP?
Potentially, but depending on the potential cost of an update, how many hours that would be, where it would fall under procurement, under services. But we would reach out to a number of consultants, at least get some quotes as a, as a baseline before we move forward with the, with the work. And we bring that back to council for their, for their review.
Well, that sounds like the best.
Someone wanna make a recommendation that we move forward with that line?
Recommend that we move forward as?
As recommended by staff?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll have an update in January, just in terms of some pricing and costs during this type of work.
Sounds like the fair way to go about it, so.
Okay. Any further discussion on the recommendation? Everybody okay with that? Got a consensus? Good?
That sounds fair.
Moving forward. Correspondence. Eastern District Planning Commission, I believe the stats are in your package there. And that's something we get from them on a regular basis. Tells us where the, you know, where the permits are applied for. Kind of gives you an idea of what the year looks like ahead. Housing starts and permits and all that kind of reflect the overall well-being or not-so-well-being in our economy. And of course, we're in, we're gonna see that slow down a little bit maybe, but we've, we've experienced some good growth over the last number of years. Any questions on that? Okay. And support for Syrian families. I believe there's a little letter there. I don't have it right in front of me.
I have it here.
Could you, you want to?
Would you like me to read it? If I can see it. November 13th, 2020, on behalf of Lifeline 224, I would like to thank Alfred Poirier and the municipality of the County of Inverness Council for their generous donation of $1,000 to help settle Al-Nessan. Would that be correct? Al-Nessan. Family in Chedikam, Lifeline 224 is supporting St. Andrews United Church Pleasant Bay, is assisting Ahmed? Ahmed, sorry. Daye? Oh gosh, I lost that. I lost it. Where'd it go? Went or went away on?
Want me to finish it?
Sure. Mine went away on the disappear.
So Ahmed, Daye, their four children, Mohammed, Fatima, Buda, and Mustafa. And they're starting a new life in Chedikam. Ahmed and his family are now permanent residents of Canada and have arrived from Syria via refugee camp in Lebanon. Thank you, Howard McKay, Lifeline 224.
Thank you.
I, I would like to explain this a little bit.
And before you go on, I see you made a, a nice donation to the cause of $600, I believe.
Yeah, you did, yeah.
Just have the letter?
Yeah. The thing about this is that the last council, that's why Mr. McKay sent out the email thanking us for the money. Because at the last gathering of the other council, Warden Betty Ann and we all agreed that, there was a motion passed that we would give $200 per person, up to $1,000 for a family, Syrian family. And I was told by Betty Ann and the councillor at the time, and I presume you were there, councillor McLennan, that it would be the same as before. So I told them that they would be getting the $600 and $1,000. So it's up to you if you wanna check with Betty Ann and the other councillor, John Dowling, Jim Mustard, and whoever was here.
Would that have been in the council meeting?
Yes.
It would be in our minutes then?
Sure, yeah. Debbie, would it be in our minutes?
I'll have to check back and see.
Yeah, yeah. But that's okay. If you don't want it, I'll pay it.
So we should have, no, Albert? We should have, they got $600, but they should have got $1,000, is that what?
No, 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 no. There's two families that came in. One family with three kids. With one kid, you know, family with the kid. And then the next family just arrived on November 9th with five.
See, that wouldn't have probably been included if they just arrived November 9th though, 'cause...
What do you mean?
Well, we would have been discussing that before the election, right? In October?
Oh, yes, yes.
So the other family wasn't there yet to approve?
Not yet to approve, but they, we knew they were covered in on the 9th.
They said they joined the committee.
Yeah, there was no moment, first motion or anything like this, I don't think there was a motion, to be honest with you.
So I think what's?
So I mean, it's up to the group, whatever you decide.
I think what's fair, if we've done $600 for one family, we should be looking at, is it $1,000 for the other five people in the other family?
That's right, yeah. That's what the other Syrian family were paid in Porto, $1,000 price.
$1,000.
Do we keep on doing this or do we?
Tanya, where would that money come from in terms of our budget?
That would come from grants organization. And motion was made February 1st in 2016 to grant $1,000 per Syrian family.
Okay. That's what we should do.
Per family. So the first, the other family should have got $1,000 based on that and the new family should get $1,000 then?
Oh, no.
No?
There may be a motion following that.
Well, they only got $600, right?
Right. The second family got $600. Al-Nessan, the one we were just discussing, got $1,000.
The first family, did you say it's $200 per person? That's in an emotion before, from the first, not our council, the council before, you know? And it was $1,000 for up to the family, $1,000. And then if you were only two, you get $200 each. And that can be checked out. That's in the, that should be in the books, on record and everything. My discussion with the Warden Betty Ann and the group before, I can't say that it went into a motion, but I was told that's what the formula is, that's what they will get. And that's why I'm?
So just, just to follow up for clarification, it was a, there was a motion at a previous meeting. So that was a audit committee meeting. Warden Dwyer McCauley called the meeting to order at 1:35. And it was approved, and within a minute, it was approved by council there. Councillor, Deputy Warden Betty Ann McQuarrie and councillor Dwayne McDonald seconded that those be approved. So that business arising, as discussed here right now, Lifeline Syria Project, Warden, Deputy Warden McQuarrie provides that a decision to provide $1,000 to each Syrian family coming to the county was approved at the audit committee meeting.
Okay. Well, that's what we'll be doing.
But that's, that's the, we just looked at, went back and looked at.
That's the president's that was said.
So maybe there are some additional meetings and discussions around that as well, but that's one we've been able to come up just now on, on record.
So that tells me one family should get another $400 and the other family should get $1,000. That's where I was coming from.
So the first family?
If it's a thousand per family.
Right. The first family that we were just speaking about, the letter there, Al-Nessan, they received $1,000. And the second family, the Al-Romi, Romi I think it is, would be, they have received $600.
Which to me makes it $200 per person in those families.
They didn't get any money yet. Okay? They didn't get any money yet. I told them they would be getting money because there was the final goal. Then we agreed with the other group, the other, and the thing is, it was $1,000 for a family.
For a family.
Or five or more, $1,000. And then the next family is $600. Because they are only three. And that's how it was made before. You can check out in the books. And I'm pretty sure my members service me right.
So it's $200 per person to a maximum of $1,000.
$1,000. Exactly.
And that's in fairness, because if you have five and one and three, then you're basing it on $200 each time.
It could be seven, it could be seven or eight. That was, that's what we were paying all across the county. You know, like from Porto to Cape Wind and everywhere.
So have, Tanya, have you a record of anything being paid yet or?
What organization would that have been paid to? Because the only payment that I see that's paid to Syrian family project in 2018 is about. Because the only payment that I see that pays a Syrian family project in 2018 is $1,000. So I don't know if there's another organization. I would have to know the vendor name, I don't know if they're being...
Would that be the Lifeline 224 that wrote the letter?
Lifeline 224, our Pleasant Bay Presbyterian Church.
Oh, St. Andrews. St. Andrews United Church in Pleasant Bay?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Those are sponsors, right?
Right.
They were the sponsors, yeah. And they're still sponsoring what we...
$1,000 payment to Lifeline Syria in 2017. And a $1,000 payment to Lifeline Syria in 2016.
Yeah, so this is...
And 2018, there was $115 payment, I don't know what that was for.
How about, we know what the policy is now, I think we have the handle on that. If Counselor Poirier works with our CFO to find out exactly what's being paid, but we want to make sure that it's $200 per person, per family, up to a maximum of $1,000. Are you comfortable with that, Counselor Poirier?
Well, that's, it is, it is what it is.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with that.
That's what it was, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, if it was not put in the record, it's too bad, but I remember that and I dealt with it and we get...
Well, we're not questioning, honey.
Yeah, you know, I just want to make sure that, you know?
We just want to know if we're comfortable with that.
Yeah, I agree, you know, it's a family, $1,000, the other one $600. And according to the motions that was made up at that time, and at that time, I think there was one or two in Porto that came in.
I was just going to ask, if you don't mind me asking, who makes the decision of these families to receive this money? Is it councilors in your community or you're in...
Well, it depends, to be honest with you, I don't know how it worked out in other communities. But like in the area, you know, it was sponsored by, there was a group started by Lifeline 224. And then we needed a sponsor. And the Catholic Church couldn't get, didn't, were not ready for sponsoring, so they all went to United, visited United in Pleasant Bay.
Yeah, St. Andrews United, yeah.
And then they all came in, Pleasant Bay, Shaddikam, all, you know, the Catholic Church, all the different churches, plus the communities right up to Howard McKay and them in Margery Harbour. And that all went under the Lifeline 224 and sponsors by, and they have a committee, they still have meetings.
And so they are looking after...
They're looking after that.
They're looking after it. And you know, they have a group, for example, to get the house, to get them warm.
So the sponsor, from what I'm understanding, the sponsor would request...
Yeah, that's right, the Lifeline, that's right.
Okay, got it. And I would say the dates that Tanya quoted were the families of this way. So they would correspond, yeah, with that, yeah. It's all good.
And myself, normally rules, I'd be told by them, I told them, they would get that. But only we went too fast.
That's the rules.
But at the same time, that's what, you know, and that's why we have a thank you note before you got the check.
Oh, that's good.
We need a, we need a recommendation here for...
Oh, I recommend.
But I think we, I don't even know if we need a recommendation for following a...
It's already...
It's already done.
Are you comfortable with that, Tanya, or would you rather see a recommendation?
I'm okay with that. I don't see $600 payment paid to anyone.
Yeah.
So I think you could, you could leave that between you and Alfred.
Yeah, I can agree with Alfred and him.
Right.
Yeah.
I think the payments, like the date you quoted were for families that were already here up on this end of the municipalities, from my own mind.
Okay, we're getting there. I do have, it's not on here, but I just received an email letter that I should read as well. And it's from Jeremy Martel from the Cape Breton Partnership. And it says, "Good afternoon, Warden Cranton, I hope this, I hope all is well. As you know, the Cape Breton Partnership recently launched Cape Breton First, a campaign aimed at encouraging the island to buy, stay, and eat local. With the holidays quickly approaching, we are also partnering with Cape Breton Regional Municipality to establish Shop Local Day on December 10th. We would like to ask the municipality of the County of Inverness, ask if the county, municipality, County of Inverness would consider partnering with us and assemble us in a similar initiative to proclaim a Shop Local Day in Inverness County. For reference below is the suggestive wording of the proclamation for consideration. Whereas the 2020 COVID-19 pandemic has affected the commercial sector worldwide, including locally, local and municipal, locally in the municipality of the County of Inverness to a point where long-term effects are yet to be understood. And whereas a number of local businesses have experienced challenges this year, and supporting local businesses in our area is a key to making opportunities out of these challenges. And whereas every dollar we spend locally this holiday season will have a positive ripple effect on our own economy for years to come. And whereas in response to Cape Breton Partnership launch for the Cape Breton Partnership campaign, encouraging residents to shop, stay, and eat locally during the holiday season and into 2021. And whereas every dollar spent on the island contributes to a better Cape Breton for all of us, be it therefore resolved that the council, that the council of the municipality of the County of Inverness declares, and it's up to us to put the date in, I guess, as a shop local stay here in the municipality of the County of Inverness, as we encourage everybody to support our local businesses. Thank you for your, for the consideration, and please let me know if you have any questions or if there could be an opportunity to partner on this, on this to encourage Inverness residents to focus their efforts on supporting local." And that's on Jeremy Martel. I hope you were able to make up my poor reading skills there.
But we don't have many days.
I was done with my thought.
I was thinking December 10th, it's a week.
It's all over.
It's done. And the government put in place yesterday, moving forward, starting on Monday, businesses, 21st, I do believe, businesses will be down to 25% capacity of their stores will be allowed in at one time. So that's, you would know that.
So like, I just got this yesterday, so...
Right, yeah, a little behind the eight ball there.
Yeah, it's not much time to plan. And I don't know how they planned, are you familiar with this, Keith?
No, not as, it's confusing now.
I mean, they have, you know, it's...
Oh, we would have to do, it sounds like, just pick a date and they take it from there.
Not many days.
I knew they were running a campaign, but I wasn't for that particular communication.
I saw that a while back and it had December 10th, but it came out, it was just before.
They're saying December 10th is, well, that's past us now.
It's a week ago.
Yeah, that was Sydney, for Cape Breton Regional Municipality.
But even for us to get the word out, today's Thursday, and if we picked Monday or Tuesday, I mean...
The council could pick any particular time.
Time, yeah.
After, later in January or afterwards, or is that the campaign?
Yeah. Because, I mean, we're not even going to have it in the OR or the reporter or anything. I mean, it'll be pretty well Christmas Eve, you know, so. Be better off doing something in the New Year to get the Boxing Day sales or whatever.
Easter, I don't know.
So do you want me to talk to Jeremy and explain that to him and that we just didn't feel there was enough time to promote something? It's a great idea.
And would you pick a date after, within your conversation with him? Or did you want to...
Or do you guys, do you guys have any thoughts on a date? And maybe they're not offering to do this after.
And maybe, that's why I was wondering. Maybe they should look at, maybe getting it to a quick, sooner next year for something like that, or we could do it ourselves, you know?
Because I believe in Sydney, didn't they do that last week in the CBRM?
Yeah, they did.
They said about two weeks.
A week ago today.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just got this, so...
Yeah. It's almost impossible.
It is.
I would have...
And most of the places, they tell you to shop online anyway. And you know, for that clown there, that's what he is, we had a job in Mycogama at Larch. It was just about a million dollars. Berlin Construction did the job. All the material came from Sydney, all the labor came from Sydney, and they even brought excavators and stuff from Sydney to do the work and trucks. And he's saying shop local, come on. Kind of giving you a kick in the head, isn't it? And I know the...
Is that the partnership involved in that?
No, that was Larch building, but you know, they're saying shop local or do local.
This, I don't know, it was this guy, this, he's with the Cape Breton Partnership.
Yes. He's saying shop local, isn't he?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, then. I don't fully agree with it.
Yeah, okay, well, I'll...
But we have to look at things like that, we have to look at our side too.
Yeah. Oh, it's, that was, I was reading that, I was thinking, I think we're way behind the eight ball.
Oh, yeah, and I know some of the union people were wild and people supplying the building material were wild. They got wild at Larch, so... When they say shop local, they should say shop Sydney. Yeah, that's exactly it.
I think what we can do is maybe perhaps put this on our radar for next year, say in October, and we'll start promoting maybe shop local.
If there's something we want to do in the New Year and all that.
Yeah, it's your conversation, I'm sure you will lead to the next, as to what it is.
And we can always look at our own thing for next year for promoting shop local.
But maybe, okay, maybe we can put something in the OR and for Monday, well, it'll be in on Wednesday or whatever.
Yeah.
Please, you know, please try shop local.
We put it in now for next week, it's pretty well Christmas Eve when it comes out.
Yeah, it's the Boxing Day speeches that we look at.
Well, that's right, yeah.
But no, we should do something to...
Well, I mean, they don't want people really traveling over the holidays either, so shop local, eat local, support your local businesses. It's been tough with COVID on our local businesses.
Yeah, let's support your local business.
Let's support our local people. They get us through all the year.
Want to do something like that, support your local business.
Right, sponsoring teens or whatever, they're the people that every committee and organization goes to looking for donations all the time. If we're having an auction, or we're having this, or we're having a basket, you go to your local businesses.
Along that same subject and talking, I know we have the OR sitting here, but is there, you know, I thought of some nice, and we don't have the picture probably, although we could do it, of doing something, you know, we're all being asked if we want to contribute to picture for promoting Christmas, you know, well, wishing people a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I was thinking of something on behalf of council as a whole to put in the OR and maybe we could add that to, remember to shop local.
Like they're doing on radio at municipalities and they're adding this to it, so whatever you want. I know what you're saying.
I'm just wondering, incorporate something like that. Do we have a budget for something like that, Tanya?
Well, our clients.
It could be prepared for regular, yeah, tours and, and cultural marketing, but we can, and I and the staff can talk about...
Could it be a next Thursday, next Wednesday, Thursday OR? Would need that to you by Monday?
Monday.
So I just thought it'd be a nice idea for us...
That's a good idea.
To do a group?
Yeah.
Sure.
Endeavor.
Yeah.
But adding shop local to it.
And adding shop local to it.
Getting back to that point.
And then we'll send, we'll send Jeremy the bill.
Yes.
And we have a picture? We don't have a picture of our council all together?
I'm sure when we're done in a few minutes, we can maybe take one.
Do you have a picture of all of us together? No.
Did you take my cameras today?
We have these, we have this.
Everybody's got a camera.
We got a camera, sure.
Alfred, did you wear your vests today? We're going live.
We'll get a, we'll get a picture done for you, one way or the other. Okay. Of course, it's half price this time of year. Okay. Next meeting date, I think we have that?
January 7th?
Yep.
Yeah.
3:00 PM?
Yep. Already been there, done that.
Yep.
Okay. And we do have, I believe, one in cam right in the week?
Nope, there's two.
Good. So we'll have to clear the room, but you're sure.